Okay. If staff's ready, we can get started then. I'm sorry. Um.
We're good, yeah.
Okay, I'll call to order the City Council Special Meeting Friday, April 24th. Uh, we'll call to order with a roll call from the council.
Here, Mike.
Nancy.
Here.
I can't see.
Councilor Ridley.
Yeah.
Councilor Ogilvy.
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy.
Here.
Mayor Stile.
Yes, okay. Then we have a, uh, I need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, as the last meeting went, we will go with this meeting, uh, for the public comment phase. Uh, if you were, uh, wished to have provided public comment, you needed to provide it before this meeting happened electronically, uh, by noon, uh, any desire to make a comment, you may send it into the City Council and we will address it at the next meeting. Please make your comments that way. At that, I will pass this on to Bruce. I suspect he's here.
Yes, sir. Okay. Glad everybody, glad everybody made it in. Excuse me. Um, there was a meeting yesterday of the, uh, Business Grant Program Committee and, um, the, we elected a chair and a vice chair. The chair is Karen Probst, vice chair is Barb Knott. And I believe that, uh, Carolyn is ready to talk about the results of yesterday's meeting. I did forward you the summary that was prepared by Kelly Ennis. So, um, hopefully that's in front of the council right now.
Alrighty, so on the, uh, email that Bruce sent yesterday, there were four specific items that we wanted to, um, cover today and get directions from the council in terms of moving forward on the grant program. Uh, the first topic that was on the list was to go over the top-level review process. Um, the committee has not yet, um, discussed the details of how, um, the applicant information will be reviewed. We will do that next week, but we wanted to at least cover the top-level review process, which our suggestion would be that, um, as we do with other grant programs in the city, that the committee would receive all the applications, they would review them, score them, basically provide a recommendation to council, um, in terms of grant amounts for each of the recipients. And then the council would have the opportunity to review, modify, if they so choose, or to accept the recommendations of the council, of the committee, I'm sorry. Any comments on that?
There any comments from the council?
If I heard you, if I heard you right, Kelly, you said that, uh, you, your committee would review the applications and then the council would re- review your recommendations, is that right?
Yeah, that's, um, my understanding, except the way that the community grants, the TAF grants are done, is that you, uh, accept or you receive the recommendations from the committee and then the council has the final approval of those recommendations.
Okay. It's really echoey in there and it's hard to really hear what you're saying.
I agree, Nancy. I can't hear well either.
Is it Saturday, Nancy?
The same, it's the same. It's really, it's just the acoustics there are terrible.
Nancy, we move the microphone away from the phone. Is that any better?
That's better.
Yeah, that's a lot better.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, do you want me to repeat what I had said about the, um, process?
Uh, yes, that would be, please.
Okay, um, our recommendation to the committee was to follow a process similar to the other grant, um, committees that the city has in terms of the community grant and the TAF grant. That is that the committee would receive all the applications, would review them, score them basically, and provide recommendations to the council in terms of, uh, the suggested grant for each of the applicants. And then at that point, the, uh, council would make the decision in terms of accepting those recommendations or, um, perhaps modifying if they, um, are not happy with some of the recommendations being provided.
Counselor Ogilvy here. Uh, Carolyn, did you believe you could have that done next week, did you say?
In terms of the recommendations themselves?
Yes.
Now, our, um, one of the things on the, um, agenda today is we would go over the tentative schedule and the, the, um, the schedule has, uh, looking at the details of how we would do the scoring. The committee would do that on Tuesday and then, um, the plan would be have a council session on Wednesday. So you would have, you and the council would have the opportunity to see how the committee is, um, going to approach the evaluation of the, um, applications. And then, um, it would probably be the following week per our current schedule that we would actually be providing recommendations back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have, I have a question. Uh, this is Robin. As you look at all of the licenses, I don't know if anyone's done this. How many pertain to fitting into this criteria?
Um, that is, uh, something that I think we need to discuss when we get to one of the other. The second item on the list was the council risk tolerance regarding the use of TLT funds. Since, um, the recommendation at this point is to use the TLT funds for this grant program, there will be, um, some restrictions and that's something that the council is going to have to, uh, provide some direction on, um, businesses that would be eligible to receive funds, um, given that these come from the TLT. Uh, in terms of the total number, it kind of depends on, um, how, um, the council chooses to interpret the, um, bargaining statutes in terms of what would be, um, eligible for TLT funds.
Okay, but it seems like it's pretty specific that it has to relate to tourism and, and the bill that, they have to be a brick and mortar and all of that. So you really haven't looked into, to what those numbers might be.
I do not know what those numbers might be and there will be, um, we want to have a discussion later about, um, there was talk yesterday about maybe a slightly broader, um, interpretation of the bargain statute. And again, that's something that, um, council will need to, um, make the policy decision on that before the committee can actually, um, consider those particular, um, businesses. Uh, for example, we have, um, some folks in town who maybe are photographers that don't have brick and mortar, but they support the tourism industry. Musicians who, um, you know, play at the local venues, again, part of the industry, but not brick and mortar. There is another, uh, provision in the statute that talks about, um, tourism promotion and that, um, again, I think we'll, we'll cover that when we, when we go through the topic on the TLT funds. That might broaden the pool to larger, um, group of, um, applicants than just brick and mortar. But, um, I'm sure Ashley will weigh in on that in terms of how that, um, but what the risk level is for that, for the city and in making that broad of a, um, interpretation of statute.
Thank you.
So in terms of the top-level review process, is the process that we outlined in terms of just the, um, the top level, is that acceptable to council and, um, something that we can go follow that, which you go across that?
Okay, any other questions on that part, topic?
Is, is any of that, in the two, that that process will be the ones that will, will assume as a committee that we're going to be following?
Yeah, I'm fine, Seth.
Sounds good.
I'm okay with that as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so then we can, uh, kind of circle back on the question that you had about the council's risk tolerance regarding the use of TLT funds. Um, as you know, what's on the table is the, um, $302,000 that is the reserve out of the TLT fund. And as such, it is subject to the, um, to the ordinances regarding that lodging act. And in 320.350, the requirement is to fund tourism, um, you can use the funds to fund tourism promotion in tourism-related facilities. And what's been discussed so far is, um, under tourism-related facilities in the definitions in, um, bar of 320.300, um, a tourism-related facility can be an improved real property that has a useful life of 10 or more years and has a substantial purpose of supporting tourists or accommodating tourist activities. And the interpretation at this point was that, as Robin mentioned, a brick and mortar, um, establishment, the business does not have to be the owner of the property, but has to be occupying brick and mortar. And that's kind of what, what all the discussions before at this point has been focused around. We had some, um, public comments before our meeting yesterday. That brought up the question of those portions of our community or those aspects that, um, don't have a brick and mortar presence, but they are targeted tourism, um, efforts. And, uh, one thing that was mentioned, um, in the meeting yesterday was looking at the definition of tourism promotion. And there is four components of that and one of them is, um, marketing special events and festivals designed to attract tourists, which as you know, is how we use the TAF funds. But, um, the question that came up yesterday and I'm sure Ashley might jump in here on terms of this one is that, could that portion of the ordinance, or not the ordinance, the, um, or a role here, could that open up a different to applicants who don't have brick and mortar? And we as a committee, we, we heard that input from, um, the attorney and we felt that that clearly wasn't something that the committee could make a call on that one. That was something that the council was going to have to determine what the risk to the city is to, um, accept an interpretation that allows non-tourism, um, applicants. So that's kind of where we were, um, looking to get some direction on this particular item in terms of what is the risk tolerance that the, the council wants to accept. And also throughout the option of, if you want to accept that risk, that, um, if there was a possibility of getting some funding that was not tied to, um, the tourism, the TLT dollars.
This is Mike speaking. Uh, comment on, I think, the way to minimize our risk is, as you pretty well laid it out, keep it to, uh, tourism-related facilities, otherwise bricks and mortar type, uh, businesses. However, I do wonder if, uh, we could allow for the, through, through this fund, the reimbursement of promotional dollars that have been spent for events that have subsequently been canceled.
Um, Mike, if I can address this, uh, that's Bruce.
Yep.
Um, we, there is approximately $130,000 that is, uh, outstanding. Those funds would normally be paid by collections from the third quarter, fourth quarter, and then going into the first quarter because those are played, it played every three months or paid every three months. So at this point, um, I am working under the presumption that it'll be, we'll be close to being able to cover those things with the, uh, tax collections. We may have to put in some, some additional money in, but that's a particularly difficult one to sort out because, um, some have put money in, but the event's been canceled. Some have put money in and they don't know if they're going to reschedule. Some had an event that kind of got canceled in the middle. So it's really difficult for us to say exactly where we are, but we think that our risk on it is about $130,000. But there will be tax funds coming in.
So that means the council will have to make a decision on that at some later date once those tax dollars come in. I, I guess I'm just wondering about, you know, obviously some of these events are merely being rescheduled and the funds will still be available. I was just concerned that there may be events and I, I don't know of any in particular. Maybe the one, the Sabre Cannon Beach, it maybe got cut off right in the middle, uh, of the event. But I suspect those dollars that already been spent is not, but there is no opportunity to recover that. And that one's, I don't think it's going to be rescheduled. I understand that with their rescheduling, or they're just not going to do it at all. We don't need to put funds there, but I'm just concerned about some of those that got caught right at the beginning that had, um, outlays and then had no opportunity to benefit from that. Again, I don't know if that caused harm because funds were given to them in the first place and I don't know that they had out-of-pocket costs. So I guess I'm willing and understand waiting, uh, and dealing us at a separate, with this at a separate time because it is going to be much harder to defend any contributions, uh, that we might give under this, uh, under this plan. So with that rambling, I, I guess I'm willing to recognize that there may have been, uh, damages or costs due to the COVID-19 to those services that promote tourism. But at this point, I don't think we can, or they can even categorize what those are. And it certainly puts the, uh, the whole program, program at risk if we were to start handing out, uh, TLT funds for that purpose. Therefore, I, I think is why is to keep it focused just on bricks and mortar type businesses this time.
And Mike, um, Bruce again. Our staff's position is that we are going to do everything we can to keep the people that had TAF grants, uh, to keep them whole. And so, for example, the, uh, Wine Fest, um, or Sabre Cannon Beach, that's one that, um, the, the, uh, folks involved spent all the money. It was going to be paid over time, so they've not recouped all that they were going to get from the city. So it's our intention to, uh, to resolve that as funds come in, uh, from future collections. What it's kind of doing is, uh, blurring the line between the 2019, 20 and the 2021 TAF grants. Because it may be, because we dropped, we're going to drop off for two quarters in a row, excuse me, that, um, the amount of money that might be able to be awarded is, uh, a little bit more questionable now. So that's a whole bookkeeping thing we've got to sort through. But, uh, we, we will try to, uh, at least, uh, repay expenses. And we might not give the whole amount if the event's not going to occur, but we will try to pay the expenses that they incurred. And remember too, that the, uh, the way that the, uh, we're talking about funding this particular program, the grant program, is we're just taking from the reserves and we're not taking from future collections. So the future collections would be where we would try to keep everybody whole.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, glass please.
Oh, this is Robin. Yeah, I would really like to work on, uh, Sabre because it's one where they got caught in the middle. They did, made the best choice, uh, possible for the community, but they shouldn't be penalized because of that.
Yeah, and that's our, and we agree, Robin. That is our intention. It's just trying to get to a point that we can pull all that stuff together.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
The council knows, we, we support what you're saying from a staff standpoint. And, um, that's the direction we are in now. We'll let you know if that changes.
Thank you.
Sure, well, thank you. Any other, um, there's two things that are, uh, a little bit up in the air right now. Probably this month, possibly even this week, uh, under normal conditions, the TAF committee would be meeting to discuss the TAF grants and, when is that, I'm sorry, when is that?
The applications are due until May 1st. They would meet at the end of May.
Okay, yeah.
But they're, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit off on my time. The, the grants would be, the grant request will be due on, on May 1st and then at the end of May is when action would be taken. And we have a similar situation with the, um, community grants. And we are trying to, you know, work through those and, uh, you know, because those have to go into the budget, we will find some way to go ahead and make some decisions on that, whether it goes to parks or whether it's a council decision. But those are two that we also want to make sure that, um, we support moving forward. But they're both things that would be happening now in a normal circumstance.
Okay, uh, sure we go back to Carolyn or are we, are we finished with it?
So what we're looking for, um, from the committee's perspective is, and I think I've heard two of the council say that we want to, um, include brick and mortar establishments in terms of, um, being eligible for the, um, the grant. But going beyond that, um, if a business does not have a brick and mortar, um, presence, then what I heard was the council wasn't comfortable with going to that, to that point and using that, um, promotion portion of the expense to, um, support the, going that, taking that up the next step.
Uh, this is Robin. Could Ashley look into that to see if there's a possibility that people like musicians who are in a brick and mortar place while they're doing it, but they don't have, um, one themselves? If she could look into that to see if that was at all possible?
This is Ashley. So I was involved in the conversation yesterday. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, Ash.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can definitely do an attorney-client privilege memo to the council on this topic. I will tell you that there's no, um, direct statutory language that we could rely upon to, um, give funds directly to artists, musicians, or photographers. You know, with the brick and mortars, we can look at that, um, you know, a tourist-related facility, useful life, you know, within a purpose of, of serving tourists. Uh, what we had talked about yesterday is that, you know, with the TAF grants, you know, we look at tourism, the tourism promotion, um, statute and say, you know, these events promote tourism because they're special events and they put heads in beds. You know, if we, if we allowed people to attempt to make the case to us about how an artist, musician, or photographer, you know, has an independent business not established in the brick and mortar, could also meet that definition, you know, would we be open to that? I think it would be a very high bar for a musician, artist, or photographer to make the case that they, uh, meet that standard. You know, what they would need to show is that, you know, in a, in of themselves, they are a special event in the same way that your, oh, your TAF, um, your TAF committee, your TAF grants are the same. You know, like I'm a musician, my specific work brings X amount of tourists to Cannon Beach, you know, put heads in beds. I only sell my stuff in Cannon Beach. You have to come to Cannon Beach to, you know, buy my art or experience my music. My concern again, you know, we talked about the different levels of consequences for being wrong about how we, uh, spend these, spend these restricted funds. I think this veers more into, uh, you know, a higher risk, much higher risk for the city. And I would also be somewhat cognizant of, you know, putting this out there and allowing people to spend, you know, a substantial amount of time trying to gather these facts and figures when we know that it's just going to be too much of a risk for us to award them the grants.
I think I'd have to agree with Ashley, even without a confidential legal memo on this subject. We do have limited funds and I think we're going to find plenty of applications, uh, for those funds without reaching out to individual artists, musicians that, it, it's hard to say that they, people come here just to see that artist or to listen to that music. We're already at risk. I hate to take more risk.
Nancy, you had a comment?
I was, I was actually, actually going to ask the very same question that Robin asked and that was, can Ashley, talk to us about that. But I tend to agree with Mike. I think that, uh, we're already taking a risk and I'm not sure I want to increase that risk, especially that might end up affecting us personally.
Brandon, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, I do have a comment. Um, I, I guess I feel a bit differently in that these individuals are providing the same type of service that many individuals that just happen to have a brick and mortar establishment, you know. They may not be selling something exactly tangible, but, you know, like you could make a decent argument that in the case of a photographer, they're doing just that. So, um, I, I guess my, my take on it is, is different and I would be willing to accept a bit more risk than say, um, Nancy and Mike had expressed.
Okay, good. Um, I just, I think this would be the time, uh, I hadn't figured out when to say this, but I contacted the Oregon Ethics Commission. Since I do intend to apply, I have decided that I shall not be involved in this discussion. It is a, it's an interesting definition that they have between would and should. Uh, I will, I was, I was thinking I was going to try and be involved in this, uh, more. I went through the application requirements that Bruce sent out earlier and I realized I had a lot of comments and I realized that would be too involved, at least from my point of view. So I'm just going to step away from this decision. I'll run the meeting. I don't know if that's appropriate, but I'll just help everybody communicate.
Running the meeting is totally fine, Mayor.
Thanks, Ashley.
Well, I, I respect your decision, Sam. And I'm, I'm sorry that we'll be missing your, uh, participation.
Still here, face value. Okay. Bruce, you want to take us on?
I think we were looking for an answer.
Yeah. Robin, how do you feel about it?
Robin?
I'm sorry, what? Oh. How do you feel? I really appreciate all of the work that the committee's done so far and, um, I really think that we should go forward with this.
So that means taking the risk? Or not to?
I would really, I would really appreciate it if Ashley could send us some information about this so that we could thoroughly, uh, consider it.
Sure, I will definitely do that. Um, look for something by Monday for me.
Thank you.
Okay, Bruce, it sounds like what- Okay, Bruce, it sounds like what we've got is a little bit of a wait until Monday. Sometime after that.
Okay. We're looking, we sent you a tentative calendar, and we were hoping to have some decisions so that the next meeting of the team would be on Tuesday. But it sounds like we will need to have a meeting of the council before y'all have the information, at least on this one subject.
Well, on that subject, but I think that we can continue on with the application language and format. And since the questions that are on here would be appropriate regardless of which way the council decides to go in terms of what levers they want to take. I mean, it would be the same set of questions. So we could at least get that settled. And then the only difference would be whether we put in the references or mention regarding promotion. And when the council makes that decision, we can finalize the application without that.
Okay, but again, we were looking on Tuesday. When y'all got done would be the day we send out the application.
Right, and that might, obviously, that would need to be delayed until the council makes that decision because if one of them mentioned we didn't want to have them, have an applicant put in all the effort of going through the application processes, they're not going to end up being considered based on the council's response. So we might have to push that a little bit.
We meet on Monday evening after we read Ashley's document?
That would be fine with me.
Yeah.
I'm also willing to try.
We don't want to wait any longer than we have to.
I agree with you, Nancy. I'd be more than willing to try and actually work this out now.
Yeah.
In order for the committee to be able to move forward with, you know, some swiftness.
If I can just step in here for a second. It's Bruce. I just got a text from Ashley, and she said that we, you could go into an executive session right now, have a discussion with Ashley, and then reconvene the meeting if that is acceptable.
I agree.
And if Rusty can figure out the technology for that.
Could we go through most of the rest of the meeting and come back to this, so it's kind of at the end?
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Let's do it that way, and then we can post or if people don't want to continue and listen. So, next part.
All right, cool. Which is the application language and the format. So you should have gotten, received the latest version that the committee has developed yesterday that talks to the questions and the application requirements for any applicant for this grant. So what we would do up at the top paragraph, where it's about eligibility statement and grant opportunity statement, and the basic information in terms of who would be eligible. There is the italic section, insert tourism-related facility, insert promotion definition. So based on your discussions, Ashley, later, you would insert the appropriate sections from 320 to 350 of the ORS requirements, and then also the ORS 320, 300, tourism-related facility for sure, and then perhaps the tourism promotion. So that would lay out the eligibility requirements with respect to the year. And then after that, we'll kind of go through the application requirements. Next week, the committee is going to meet and going to talk in more detail of how they will assess the responses from the applicants. We're kind of struggling with a completely subjective method, a subjective approach, or some of the lines between the two. So our intent to these questions was try to cover all three of those options in terms of an objective, a subjective, and a combination. So there is a combination of questions that are kind of binary, I guess you would say. It's, you know, they'll have some standard selections that they could pick. And then there'll be a series of, for better term, ethichments to describe the answers to the questions that we cut up. So the first couple of them are just basics about the business. The organization name, the physical address, and we have the physical address there to establish the brick and mortar. The ownership's.
Can I interrupt for just a second? Carolyn, could you go a little slower, speak a little slower? Because it's really difficult to understand what you're saying in that room.
Okay.
If you can go a little, talk a little slower so we can hear what you're saying, that would be great.
I will try to do that. It's my kind of tendency when I'm talking in public to have these things up, so I will make an effort. In terms of the application requirement, the first couple of items are really just the basics of the business. What's the location, the information for the owner, the ownership start date. We want to assure that the business, or we want to know how long the business has been in business. And some other particulars, the Cannon Beach business license number, the Oregon registry number. If a nonprofit applies, and there are several nonprofits in town that have a brick and mortar presence, we would need their IRS letter of determination. So those are kind of just the items that are the basic business identification. After that, we start asking for specific information that will help the committee make decisions on the applications. The first one would be either a commercial lease payment amount or a mortgage payment. So we're looking to get a sense of what that obligation is for the business, as well as an average of the combined monthly utility bills. And here, you know, top water, wastewater, electric, gas, internet, you know, whatever they group together as their utility charges. One item that we discussed yesterday that didn't end up making it onto the final sheet we had here is we wanted to ask them, what is the total amount of funding that the businesses requesting? So that's in addition to what you have on your paper there.
Could you repeat that, please, Carolyn?
Yeah.
Ask the applicant what's the total amount of funding they are requesting. We want them to have the opportunity to say, you know, we need $3,000 or $5,000 or whatever it might be, just so we have a sense of that.
Thank you.
After that, kind of the industry type, and I think the last version of this document you saw had the larger selection of industry types. But going with the brick and mortar requirements, we reduce this down to three main ones, a restaurant bar, food service, a retail establishment. And a retail establishment really could be anything that has, again, a brick and mortar presence. You know, salon, sale, establishment, and accommodations. And then we apply, we added the other, which is for, if somebody feels that they don't fit into either of those, any of those categories, but things they still fit the criteria, they could identify as other, providing explanation of how they fit into the criteria. I'll pause there if anyone has a question or needs to. Okay. The next one here is getting down to asking the business to let us know approximately what percent of their business is derived from tourism, again, to satisfy the CLT, the ORS requirement. And then also to explain, give them an opportunity to explain how their business fits the definition of the ORS requirement. And that's what those two together will provide. Some of the examples that, or at least one of the examples that Ashley provided us yesterday when we were discussing this before, supporting the percent of business derived from tourism is to, you know, to pick one month and have the business look at their credit card sales and see how many of them were from customers outside of Platte County. And that was one example that she provided. There was, you know, accounting to that, that perhaps some of the businesses would not want to share that information. But that's something that is a very concrete way to demonstrate the amount of businesses you're getting from outside of our immediate community. The other option that was provided, and these are just two, there could be other, is to just provide a detailed narrative that supports your business's tourism-related activities. Questions on those two?
None from me at this time, Carolyn.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. And after that, we had two, I think there's actually three questions related to employment numbers. The first one was to request the average full-time employment in 2019, rounded to the nearest whole number, and the intent of this was really to get a sense of the size of the business. We know that most of the business around here, the amount of staffing that they have is very variable with the time of year and season. So this is just to get an average FTE over the year. We're kind of still deciding here if we want to do this, and to give them the option to select from the numbers there, or just really just allow them to input a number. You know, their average FTE is seven, or whatever it might be. And so that's like an average. Go ahead.
This is Nancy. I have a question. 30 hours a week is full-time?
I have the same question, but I have, yeah, I have been informed that's kind of the standard. We looked at the length that the seaside application had, and it indicated 30 as being a full-time.
If I can, that typically comes from the ACA. The ACA, with requirements to help insurance consider a full-time employee 30 hours a week or more.
And we wanted to make sure that we included that calculation so that everybody would use the same calculation.
This is Mike. I have a comment on the number of employees. Having trouble figuring out why we would use the average of the year, especially for these cyclical businesses, when in fact what's happened is they had to shut down in March. And it seems like the number of employees that they had, full or part-time, just prior to the emergency declaration, would be a much more appropriate basis for looking at their costs since that time.
And we definitely agree with that, Mike. If you look at the next question, total number of employees, either full or part-time, prior to. Okay, prior to the emergency declaration on 3/16. So we do have that as the next question. And yesterday, we discussed a follow-on question to that, which didn't make it onto the list, which is to ask them basically that same question, what is the total number of employees that you have right now? And so we would get a sense between those two questions of how many, how many, the change in their employment from the day before the emergency declaration to the day that the applications go out. Does that address your concern, Mike?
Well, no, I see that. I'm just trying to understand how that would be useful in determining the amount of the grant or who gets a grant versus one that doesn't. So, but you've thought about it a lot longer than I have. If you see a good reason for that, then it's fine. It just, I don't know how I would apply that, that's all.
Well, I, as a committee, we haven't talked about how we would use each of these components in terms of the evaluation. So we wanted to make sure that we kind of cover all the bases, even though it might be something in the end that doesn't factor into our evaluation. We felt it was prudent to perhaps over-request a little bit of information than to not have some information that later on we thought might have been important to have.
I understand that. That's fine.
Let's see. And then the next two questions kind of are addressed at looking at what the direct impact of the changes. And we picked a five-week period that basically ended with the date we were going to publish the application. And we wanted to look at the business's change in revenue and change in their payroll costs in this five-week period since the emergency declarations until now, basically, and the same five-week period a year ago. And we put these in the fashion of asking a percentage. We didn't want to ask any particulars on revenue or payroll costs for a business, but we wanted to then to provide a look at the change from last year to this year for us to have a sense of the impact that has on the business.
We can hear you.
I hear some whispering.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments on Carolyn's? Good work.
Okay, and that was kind of, sorry, somebody else has a comment?
No?
No, okay. Those were the, basically, the last of the kind of simple, objective questions. And ones after this are the opportunities for the applicants to provide some detail. So I'll just go through them. The first one here is the other grants, loans, or assistance applied for along with current status and amount. This one we had in our original, and we discussed whether we should take this out or not. I know at the last council meeting, some of the councilors expressed that this wasn't necessarily something that they were looking to see on the application. But we wanted to leave it in here to get, you know, to get direction from the council. This is one of the questions that you want to have remain on here. I'll pause there if anyone has a question.
Councilor Ogilvy, yes, I feel fine with it remaining in.
I just hope that if we're going to see recommendations, that they don't depend on the fact that somebody has applied for a grant, another grant. I think we need to do it based on our own, I don't know, opinions, and not base it on the fact that they may have gotten a grant from somewhere else.
That's a fair point, Nancy.
And we will, as a committee, be coming back to you in the middle of next week to kind of give you more details in terms of our review process and how we will grade things or rate things. So that would be an opportunity for us to discuss the particulars of how each of these items on the application are weighed and considered in the review process. That sounds like a fair approach.
Carolyn?
Yeah?
Councilor Ogilvy here. Are you yet to mention, or maybe I missed it, the fact that is not having a Cannon Beach business license, would that preclude an individual from applying?
It would make them ineligible because one of the, you know, we do ask at the beginning under the basic business information is what is their Cannon Beach business license number. So anyone would need to have that license. And they would need to have their state Oregon registry number. If they're a nonprofit, they need to have their IRS letter of determination.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed that.
Yeah, I think the first, maybe five or six are kind of, and maybe the tourism percentage question. Those are ones that, I think, I can't remember the terminology that we had yesterday. They were kind of threshold tests, that you have to meet these threshold tests in order to be eligible. And then once you're put into the group that's eligible, then. And then once you're put into the group that's eligible, then these other questions that are on here allow the assessment of, you know, both beyond eligibility and look at the need. And allows us to make the recommendation for the percentage or for how much of the requests that they receive. Do you have some answers?
Yep.
So, and the rest of the questions down here again are ones that would be essay questions. What is your specific employment changes since 316? And this is kind of a descriptor of the earlier question that we asked of like, how did your, how many employees did you have before the declaration? And how many do you have now? And this provides an opportunity for the applicant to give details on that. Same thing on the operational changes. For example, if, one of the things I think we've discussed quite a bit is, you know, a business that has closed completely, say a restaurant business that had closed completely, and then some that are partially open for, you know, delivery or takeout. And they might be in a situation where they're revenue negative now because they have staffing that, that they still have employees on staff, but their revenue stream is clearly much reduced from what it was before. So again, we wanted to give them opportunities to expand on that to make their case. And going from there, explanation of effects of COVID-19 restrictions on your business, you know, that one's a pretty wide-open question. You could expect a lot of different responses on that one. To estimate the number of months your business can sustain under the current revenue and conditions to kind of get an idea of how much reserve somebody might have. Specific plans for use of grant funding requested. So again, asking them, you know, are you going to cover utilities, rent, mortgage, employment, you know, apparel? And we also, I know at the last meeting that there was some discussion from council about when we get some feedback after recipients have received their grant of how they actually spend their grant funding. So that one was kind of the question post-application step.
It's made that, this is Councillor Benfield. I think the post-grant receivable reporting would go a long way in supporting this whole program. I guess it could go against the program too, if they didn't use it the way we perceive. But since anytime you're just handing out funds, you ought to have some sort of a post audit. This would be a very simple and undemanding post audit just to, you know, so many months after back in operation, take the time to say how this funding was spent and any other comments they might like to add to it. So I, yeah, I'd like to consider the post-grant reporting, but I think without further discussion, I think it's, it should be a requirement. As long as I interrupted everybody, I'd like to go back to this requesting other grants and loans, whether pending, approved, or denied. I just have a hard time thinking how the people that are going to be evaluating these requests, how that would help them. If you see that somebody requested, you know, $200,000, are you going to deny it? Because they've requested a huge amount from somewhere else, and you don't know whether it's going to be approved or pending or not. I mean, you know, if it's approved, you might say, well, you don't need it from us. But maybe they needed a whole lot more. I just don't know how you use it. And we can't, the evaluators can't use it. And it, I guess, and somebody filling it out, they're going to be saying, ah, boy, I want to tell them I've applied for a $20,000 grant. I might not get this one, and I might not get that one either. It just seems inhibiting to ask what else they've got coming up to help them. We're here to really try to help with the funds that we have based on them being a tourist-related facility and not, and to me somewhat independent of their other efforts to try to salvage their business. Those are my thoughts. I don't know that it hurts, but I certainly don't think it helps any of this. And it, it seems like it'd be inhibiting to other applicants. Are they going to say, well, since I haven't applied anywhere else, are they going to say, I don't really need it? Or since I've applied for a whole lot, are they going to say, I don't need it? I just, I don't know how the applicant's going to look at that. And I don't see it helps us at all.
This is Jim, and the reason I feel this question is important is because, you know, I've heard of lots of different businesses that have applied for the grants and loans that are out there that have either missed out on those grant funding or have denied those grant opportunities. And to me, those are the businesses that are going to be most in need to help get through this time. And so without this question, we're not going to know those that, the people that are in desperate situation. And so knowing whether they have or haven't and what their status is really only will help clarify who might be in more dire straits at this moment and who might need the assistance right now. So I think that's going to help clarify that for us to a degree. I don't think anyone on the committee is going to look at those grant numbers and say, oh, they might get that, so we need to include them. It's more a factor of trying to identify who might have a greater need at the moment.
I think so, that you do get that answer when you start looking at some of the, as Carolyn put it, the essay questions. When you talk about the estimated number of months your business can sustain under current revenue and conditions, and the estimated impact on employees and employment situation from grant funding, I think you do get the answers to that question.
The last question that we have on here is explanation of actions taken outside of this grant to alleviate impact. So perhaps that would be an opportunity for them to say, yeah, we applied for the, whatever the grant is, and that way we would, they would provide whatever was relevant to them with that question. Does that sound like it's kind of good?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Okay, and then let's see. Estimated impact on employees and employment situation from grant funding, that would be this grant funding, specific plans to bring employment in business back following listing and restrictions. And then the one you just touched on, explanation of actions taken outside this grant to alleviate the impact. And then just the coin to the bottom, we wanted to lay out for the applicants what the total pot of money is, $302,000. And there was discussion at the last meeting in terms of setting a cap in terms of what is the maximum grant amount? And that's something that we would need council to provide on the, what that amount would be. I think I remember the number that Sam threw out last time was $3,000. I don't know if that's what the consensus is. So we'll ask for direction on that one.
I think the $3,000 is significant and would help most anybody and everybody. Going less than that, you're starting to get downward. It's not even going to cover a month's rent, or it'd be limited to basically other expenses. So I'm comfortable with the $3,000 as a cap, and people don't need that. I don't know, are they going to ask for the maximum? I don't know.
Well, just, go ahead, Nancy.
I'm comfortable with the $3,000 too as well because that will allow us to spread it out among more businesses, I think. So unless, you know, it also is going to depend on how many businesses actually apply too. We could probably back to that figure. We get fewer businesses than we expect that will apply.
And this is Bruce.
I agree with the cap as well.
I think, or yesterday when we were talking, or this discussion, the idea of having a higher cap doesn't mean everybody gets to apply for it, but if you have a situation that it might warrant a different grant award, that the flexibility would be there.
This is Robin. I feel that when we're doing the tourism and arts grants, often we will have that sort of challenge come up. And I think as this committee moves forward, they'll be able to guide us on what they find.
Yeah, I agree. I think we could start out with the $3,000 for business and then just see what happens with the applications. We might have another discussion about it, but at least they know that they could apply for up to $3,000.
I'm having a really tough time holding my tongue here. I'm trying, I'm going to impart a little bit of information that I don't think is, it's just information. On a quick survey of myself, looking at the business license lists, I would expect around 300 applications.
Wow. Well, I think we need to see if that's true. It very well may be, but let's see. Maybe we don't want to put a cap yet on it until we find out how many businesses are going to apply.
That certainly would be one way to do it, and also give businesses an opportunity to feel more able to be forthcoming about what their true need is. I think if they knew they could only receive so much, they may, you know, feel discouraged and sort of downplay what their true need is. I'm not sure, it's just a thought I have.
Sam, the figure that you came up with, 300, was that 300 brick-and-mortar tourism businesses?
Approximately, yeah. You take all of the star friends and active businesses. There's 100 downtown just to start with. Then you add in all the hotels and short-term rentals. You're well over 200.
Councillor Ogilvy here. Are we ready to discuss whether a business such as a short-term rental would even qualify?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask about that one. You know, by the definition in the ORS, it's like, has a substantial purpose of supporting tourism or accommodating tourist activities? The definition of a tourist-related facility. Could a short-term rental, you know, a 14-day rental or, you know, the transient one, could that really fulfill that definition? And again, I think that's going to be a call that council has to come to on in terms of that, if that means there is tolerance for a tourism-related facility.
Oh, I can add some context to this. So this is Ashley. As I hear the questions, whether a short-term rental, which is essentially somebody's home, meets the definition of a transient lodging, or tourist-related facility. Is that correct? That's the question?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is all going to come down to the showing that the applicant makes. This is one of the conversations that we had yesterday. And my strong recommendation to the city is that, you know, if we are going to do this grant program, which clearly we are, we need to ask for specific information from all the applicants to help make our case that these facilities meet that definition. So every single applicant will need to provide reasons why they meet that definition and some background, background information or documentation to support that. So there is definitely a case that a short-term rental could meet that definition, but, you know, we need, we need them to help us make that, make that case by providing, you know, their rental data. You know, is it a house that's rented once a year? You know, would that be, would that house have a substantial purpose of supporting tourism where every other week of the year it's used by a personal residence? You know, I think that that house likely would not be able to make the showing. Where if somebody has multiple short-term rentals that are rented every week by tourists, that would be a different situation.
Let me add something here. You know, hotels are specifically built for renting to the tourist. The second homes were not built specifically for renting to tourists. That's a supplemental income, and some people may depend on that to cover their mortgage. But it's not a tourism-related facility in my definition. And the point, they rent it once, they rent it once every 14 days, or do they have one of the lottery tickets and they can rent it as much as they want? The fact that they can't rent it while they've been shut down doesn't mean that they have a loss of revenue, but it's not a revenue specific to a tourist facility that was built to serve tourists. So I just have a hard time making that available to all the short-time renters. Certainly hotels and motels do qualify because they have a license to rent nightly.
Well, and Mike, I think we were talking about a 10-year situation, and some of the rentals are for a five-year term.
Right. So the 10 years is the useful life of the improved real property. And, you know, I think the idea behind that is that, you know, we're talking about a quote "facility," and a facility is not something that's temporary. So, you know, a food cart wouldn't be improved real property with a useful life of 10 years or more. So, you know, we're not talking about, you know, we talked about this before in when we were doing the TAF grants. It doesn't have to be guaranteed that you're going to use it for 10 years.
Yeah, I can't understand what you brought in.
Yeah?
Something in your phone, I think, because I can't hear what Ashley's saying.
Sorry, I'll go back a little bit. So, you know, just to summarize, the useful life of 10 years or more is just, it has to be a permanent facility. It can't be something temporary. It has nothing to do with what your rent terms are, or the lease terms, or how long you've been in business and guarantee that you're going to last for 10 years. It's really just, it has to be a permanent structure.
How would this, Mike, how would your philosophy be with the the properties that rent out short-term rentals? There was the companies that have short-term rentals as their business.
Are you talking about the property managers?
Yeah, property managers.
Oh, I suspect property managers that are here, they have a bricks-and-mortar facility. So they probably qualify. But, you know, my house down the street that serves family and friends, and I also put it in a rental occasionally. I just don't see that that qualifies as a tourist-related facility. I don't see people coming here because they love going to that particular facility. I don't know, I just have, and it seemed to me to be a less needy, lesser need. And anything that we give to that would take away from the businesses that truly from the businesses that truly make the character of Cannon Beach.
I just wanted to also point out that, you know, I'm not sure if we do it for one person. It seems like we need to do it for everybody, sort of argument. But Seaside has excluded short-term rentals from their, their grant pool. And I guess that's why I brought this up more. Is it a philosophical argument to exclude them on our part? Is the question I have.
Brandon, was that the property management company as well?
That I'm not sure about. I don't want to, to, to speak to that aspect.
And one point on this, the Seaside grant program is their funding did not come from TLP funds. Their funding comes from their general fund. And they excluded all lodging from their grant program because the lodging facilities were getting a waiver of a portion of their third quarter TLP tax payment. So we're kind of in a different situation in terms of our funding source than Seaside is.
That's a good point, Carolyn. Thank you.
So just one other point, just to kind of keep in mind. You know, we are talking about bricks and mortar, but there's, there's two pieces to the statute. It has to be improved real property with a useful life of 10 years or more and has a substantial purpose of serving tourists or a tourist-related need. So, you know, when we award these grants, we're going to need to have a showing that they meet both of those. So, you know, just because you have a brick and mortar doesn't mean you qualify. You have to make the second showing as well.
Right. And back towards the beginning of the application to address that point there is we're asking the businesses approximately what percent of your business is derived from tourism? And then explain how your business is tourism or tourism promotion related according to the definition. And we'll include the definition, the ORS definition, and attach the necessary documentation. So the onus will be on the applicant to demonstrate the tourism component of their establishment.
Let me ask a question. Is a rental permit the same thing as a business license from the city of Cannon Beach?
We need both, don't you? Yes, you need both, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Ashley, if I understand it right, property management companies would be eligible to apply, but individual housing, houses that are not using a property management manager would not be eligible. Is that what you're saying?
Is that a question for me, Nancy?
Yeah.
You know, again, it will, it will be on the, the showing that the property manager would make, you know. So a property manager that has a storefront in Cannon Beach, you know, they can make, they can try to make an argument that, you know, they meet their improved real property, so their facility may substantially serve tourists rather than the homeowners. So that would be my, you know, what, who are they providing that service to? Are they providing it to the property owners or are they providing it to the tourists? You know, I think that is somewhat of a tricky one because their profit comes from, I would assume, I don't know their business model, but I would assume that their profit comes from fees that the homeowners pay and not tourists. That's an interesting one.
Okay, back to dead air. Any other comments?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think that's sort of a gray area because the people who come to rent a short-term rental are the ones that pay. It isn't the homeowner that pays. The homeowner pays a percentage of the management fee because they have the houses cleaned and that sort of thing. But they wouldn't, it's the person who comes to the management property who is a tourist who pays.
I think it's, it's getting pretty far afield from the definition of it a tourist-related facility. So, you know, it's, it's not, so it is a brick and mortar, but it is a brick and mortar that doesn't directly serve tourists. It, you know, it serves property owners in putting property available for tourists. So, again, it's going to be a risk-level question for the council. But, you know, would we really consider that a tourist-related facility? And we had talked about like landscaping companies and other companies like that. And again, you know, that is, that is taking the definition, you know, it's taking a very broad look at that definition.
Ashley, this is Jim. I, I don't follow the logic of vacation property management company whose sole existence is to have visitors come and rent properties. Without visitors using that facility or that business, there's no use for that business. So all of that money comes from tourism in my mind. So I'm, I don't know how you're excluding the property management companies in that process. To me, it's similar to a hotel lobby. So I, I actually feel like they would.
The hotel directly serves the tourists. So the tourist comes to the hotel, they rent a room from the hotel. You know, that's, I, in my mind, a much clearer transient lodging facility. The, I think there's, again, you know, it'll be a council call, but it certainly seems like there's an argument that a property management makes it easier for residents to rent properties. And it's not as direct of a link to tourism. But, you know, so that's what I'm saying, is that it's just not as clear as, you know, a shop downtown that sells, you know, Cannon Beach merchandise to tourists. You know, that is a pretty strong case that we can make. These other businesses, you know, the case is a lot more tenuous.
I understand your point about it being tenuous, but that industry solely exists to serve tourists. So I don't see how that would be excluded, in my opinion.
So then again, I guess that's the thing that the council is going to have to make those types of policy decisions. I think the application information that's in front of us with a couple of additions that we've made through this would be able to handle the different situations that we've talked about today. It's just at this point, the council with their, in communication with the attorney is going to have to make that call and provide that guidance to the committee in terms of when we evaluate the applications. I mean, it would be advantageous if some of that guidance happens before the applications go out so that if there's an applicant who clearly is not going to fit in the definition of what the council is willing to accept with respect to risk, that they don't, you know, go through the effort that there's not going to be any chance at all that they're going to be considered.
So I think that's a good point. You know, in my mind, this definition of tourist-related facility, it's the facility, the storefront, that really should be directly serving tourists.
The council needs to make this decision. So I need the council to voice one way or the other. Do they meet with Ashley's concerns or with Jim's?
Well, I already voiced my concern. And that was that the rental, short-term rental property owners do not qualify, but probably property managers, property manager companies that are in Cannon Beach with bricks and mortar facilities do qualify.
I agree.
I would echo those same sentiments as well, Mike. I would also add that the property management companies have employees. They have a lot more invested in their, their businesses in terms of, I guess, our local community. You could argue that the homeowners themselves have invested more in their homes, but it would be no different than if competition drove out the need for, for guests coming to their homes. I'm, I guess I would just say, echo that the property management companies would be accepted. The property owners would not.
I would agree. I think that the property management companies basically draw visitors from more than 50 miles away. And they, by that definition, they do serve, you know, they do comply with the law. So I would say that, and as Brandon mentioned, the employees that do work for them as well also provides a service that tourism needs. So I would say, let's at least allow the tourism property managers to, or the property management companies to apply for the grant.
Okay, and I'll keep my opinion to myself. It sounds like Carolyn and Ashley, for the proposal that will be coming forward, you have some direction on that point.
This is Bruce. I'd like to ask the committee, are there any other examples like this that we need direction on? Okay.
I think we've covered the ones that we discussed yesterday. So we have, we have a couple of changes to the application that's in front of you. We're adding total amount of funding requested. We were going to add the total number of employees currently, you know, to go along with the total number of employees prior to the emergency declaration. And we're going to remove the question about the other grants and loans and put in maximum grant amount of 3,000 per business. And we will await the council's guidance on the insertion on the tourism-related facilities for tourist promotion until after they determine an effective session. But otherwise, that's kind of what we will have for applications.
I have a question about whether or not the maximum amount was going to be part of the application.
If I can.
This is part of that, and my question is whether or not we're going to include a maximum amount to be incorporated in the application.
And this is Bruce. I have a comment kind of along those lines. One of the things that I'm going to ask staff to do is to go through a more refined search to try to see if it might be eligible. Because I think that might make a difference to that, you know, particular number. And maybe the maximum is something that we can answer later if we have that information. Because the committee's going to have one more meeting. Then they'll be meeting with council, and by then we should have that information. And then it's just a matter of a change on the application.
Do we want to pass that information before the application even goes out? Because if, if it goes out with no number and, you know, 20 people filled out and then all of a sudden we put, you know, a maximum amount and some people have already submitted their application, that takes a little playing field away. Those people that do it later would have a different information than the people who originally did it.
That's a good point. Because the way that we had it set was that we would have the meeting stay with council, get direction. People would meet again on Tuesday, complete the application based on the direction, and then send it out on Tuesday. And then that was going to be followed by a meeting on Wednesday to talk more about criteria. So.
We discussed a lot in our meeting yesterday that once the application, you know, goes live and is out there, that we really cannot change anything with respect to the application because we take away the level of playing field if we do that.
When do you expect that the application will go out?
Well, we were hoping to, if we, you know, get the okay from council in terms of the application that you see in front of you and get the, the words with respect to tourism-related facility promotion. We were hoping to get this out by Tuesday afternoon. We, we, the committee were meeting in the morning and we were going to do a drive-through through the online version of the application, make sure everything worked as we expected, and then to go live then. And again, the reason, when we look at the schedule, it might look a bit aggressive in terms of the timeframe, but all of us on the committee were, were very strong on feeling that we, we wanted to get this launched out there and get through the entire process in a, in a pretty expedient timeframe because there is a need for the funds from the people that are going to be applicants. And, you know, obviously, we wanted to do the due diligence to make sure that we cover all our bases, but we, we want to make sure that we're moving with some, with speed.
Counselor Ogilvy, I see less risk in not placing a, a limit on the ask for the grants versus placing one on there.
I agree. This is Robin.
All right, this is Kelly. And I just want to say real quick that typically a purpose for putting a maximum grant amount is to put those expectations into the applicant. And so if they have a sense of range of what kind of awards they can get, that lets them know if this is even something that is worth pursuing for them. Whereas if a larger company might be, the workload put in it and the grant amount cannot consider it worthwhile. And then it also puts just expectations on what people can anticipate this would be used for.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, Carolyn. I'm a little bit concerned that somebody might be asking for, you know, $50,000 or whatever because they really, really need it. But, and we're going to be limiting possibly to $3,000. I, that's way too much disappointment, I think, for them. And if they're expecting that they're going to get somewhere around 50 and we give them three, then what do they do? So they need to make some plan for, for getting more money if they need it. So I think we need to be upfront about how much we might cap that grant at.
Could we do that possibly by, I mean, we've already identified the total amount of grant funds that are available, $300,000 or $2,000,000. And if we could make, you know, some assumptions that, okay, we, maybe we're going to get between 100 and 200 applicants. I think folks can do the math there and figure out that $50,000 is not going to be in the cards if you've got 100 people going after $300,000. You know, they can draw their own conclusions and make that decision. I mean, that's, that's the way to go, possibly.
I would support that.
Well, some people just don't really understand that or go out after that information about, well, how many people are going to apply and how much is really available and start doing the math on that. So I think we really need to be upfront with them about putting some kind of a number on there. But I think before we put a number on there, we need to know how many might be eligible. And that's where Bruce comes in, looking at the business licenses and giving us feedback about that.
He froze up.
What's that?
All right. Yeah, I couldn't. Maybe you just froze up on my machine. I couldn't hear what your final comments were, Nancy.
I think, I, I think that some people don't do the math. And they, they don't realize that there might be 100 to 200 applications and that we only have $300,000 to give out. And so I think we need to be upfront with how much we might be able, you know, might have to cap this at so that there isn't a huge disappointment at the end. So I think Bruce needs to try and kind of take a look at the. So I think Bruce needs to kind of take a look at the business licenses to see just how many might be eligible and give us that information as soon as we can get it, so we can talk about some kind of a cap.
Well, you know, if, I don't know, I still like the $3,000 limit, but if we get applicants that exceed that amount, then it is good to have that. If we don't get enough applicants to even equal that amount, the 300,000, you can always go out for another round, or you can, I guess, address it at that time. I don't know exactly how you would do it, whether you'd go out and look at individual needs and offer more, or you just put those funds back in the reserve.
Well, Mike, what you do when you have the Tourism and Arts Commission, and also the grants for parks, you have a number that you have, like 300,000, and you make it work. And by doing that, you, if you have a lot of applicants, you're going to have to not give as much. And, but it's a process, and it works out really well. So I think it's up to the committee to figure that part out and to suggest that to us.
And this is Bruce again. I was just talking to...
I don't think so.
I was just talking to, this is Bruce, I was talking to Laura Starry, who's our finance director, and she thinks that somebody can work on an eligibility list Monday morning. So we should have a better number. I'm sure it won't be totally accurate, but we'll have a better handle on what it might be. So that would be available for...
Thank you, Bruce.
No worries, Brandon, but that would be available for the committee at your Tuesday meeting. And then, I don't know if it's something that the council wants to discuss further, or just, I think what you've got is, you've got a number of people that are eligible, then you're going to have a subset that will apply. And from there, what you, again, as Robin was saying, you know, you've got the total, and then you kind of back it into it.
And Barb Mapp, I'd like to remind you that the other grant programs do not establish caps. It's based, I mean, they ask for whatever they think they need, and then the committee makes those decisions.
One thing that we could do around this question of disappointment is just to say on the application, the total number that we, the total amount that we have to give out is this amount. And, you know, be aware that you're not going to get this, you may not get the amount that you're requesting. You may not get as much as you're requesting.
This is Jim. Maybe we could add to that, that this is a small grant for business support, so that people don't expect a large $50,000 grant.
Yeah.
Kind of make that clear at the beginning might help as well.
Yeah, lower their expectation.
Yeah, kind of a disclosure at the end, saying that.
Okay, so it sounded like the consensus is to not include a maximum grant amount. So with those couple of changes that we talked about, I think we'll... Okay, we went to talking about full screen. Oh, yeah, one thing that Barb pointed out, we have the post-grant received report required. So I will suggest that the committee at our next meeting, we kind of talk about what the requirements, the post-grant receivable requirements are in terms of the recipients providing supporting documentation back to the city, if that sounds like a way that you'd be willing to go.
Hi, Em.
Yes.
Hey. Thank you, Carolyn. I think that was helpful.
I do have one more question. Are the applications going to be sent out to people, or are they going to be required to request those applications?
Our intent is to have the applications online. Staff will be working on that on Monday, based on what we have right now. But we will also provide paper copies if people are not comfortable with filling out the online version. We would, for the online version, it would make the evaluation a little bit more expedient to have, to know, you don't have to transcribe information.
And how are you going to let people know that they are available?
You're a local newspaper.
Don't get me...
The Chamber and Nancy's Facebook.
I don't have 100, I don't have 150 businesses as friend, Facebook friends, but the worst can get down.
Yeah.
This is Barb Mapp. I think the business community is very well aware that the city is willing to help them, and I don't think we're going to have a problem with getting applicants.
Okay, good.
All right, well, if we're done with that part, I'd like to talk about schedule.
Just Bruce, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just have one. Just wanted to mention that I myself own a business that's home-occupied, sole proprietorship. I have absolutely zero interest in applying for relief, but what screens people like myself from the process?
Is the business, would you be able to make a case that the business is tourism-related?
A very thin one at best.
Okay, I think that that's the way that it would, whether it makes the eligibility list or not.
Okay.
It would be determined based on the information you provide to the committee.
I think that the first threshold on that is, is it a brick-and-mortar business whose prime, the origin began, the prime purpose is for tourism? And I think, I mean, a business, a whole business like that, I think making the case would be a very thin case, as you said, in terms of supporting that ORS requirement.
Okay, thank you.
I would...
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
If you need to have the council meet again to discuss this before the applications are made available, I'm willing to meet anytime to get this going.
Hi, Em, as well.
Let's talk about the schedule now. I sent something out. The schedule that was sent, it anticipated that all the answers would be given to the committee, and that they would be able to meet on Tuesday, the 28th, 9 o'clock, to finalize the application and the application process, and then send the applications out that day. If council wants to have another discussion, once that work is completed, then we will need to put a meeting, what, Tuesday, 5:30?
Wouldn't it be helpful to have their, their results of their executive session before we meet on Tuesday?
We should have that today. I think that we'll have an answer to that today.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ashley.
It may make sense, and I don't, I mean, you can do it either way, but for the council to meet an executive session, and then we come back out into the main meeting and put anything that we need to, you know, on the record, and then do some of the scheduled questions. So I'm not sure, just putting out there, we may just want to go to executive session now.
Counsel? Makes sense.
Yeah.
Can we do this technically? How do we do this?
So just for legally, how do we do this? So if we're going to call an executive session during the middle of an already scheduled meeting, we can do that. Sam, you need to announce what the ORS is, and it's ORS 1926602F. And that's to examine an exempt public record, which is an attorney-client memo that I have been drafted, drafting during this meeting and have sent to the council. So you guys already have that, and that's what we're going to be reviewing.
Okay, that, that was quite, I was asking, yeah, Rusty technically.
Yeah, you know, we all look at Rusty, and every time we have a question, is that, we don't know how long exactly this will be, but nor do we know when to tell people to log back on. So we will leave the line open, the Zoom meeting open, and we'll come back and say, we see we're back. People can leave and then try to come back on, whatever, but we don't know how long this is going to go. So we'll leave it open.
So, so do we, do we log out? And then are you going to give us another number to log back in on for the executive session?
I will call you all on my phone.
Oh, okay.
So Bruce, should, should the council and everybody just go ahead and put all of our computers on mute during this time?
Yes.
Okay, can Rusty do that for us, so nobody doesn't do it?
Yes, Rusty will be muting everybody.
Perfect.
Everybody here in the council chamber is making mute faces.
I haven't muted him yet.
All right, good job. I'm going to go in the conference room, start calling everybody.
Robin.
Sam, do you want to announce the regular meeting?
Okay, we're back to the regular meeting.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The council met an executive session to review an exempt public record regarding legal... And the advice, the advice that I gave and the council accepted is that for these, for the use of the TLT funds in this grant program, we're going to fund tourist-related facilities. And that term is understood to be a facility or a business that occupies a facility or business, and that that facility directly serves tourist traffic. So a tourist needs to come into the business and use the facility in accommodating their tourist activities. When we do the applications, what we are going to ask is, you know, we're going to put the definition that we've talked about a lot, which is, you know, improve real property with a useful life of 10 years or more, and that has a substantial purpose of supporting tourism or accommodating a tourist activity. We're going to ask applicants that believe they, that they fall under that definition to provide support. The more documentation, the easier it'll be to make the determination that they qualify. However, because of the variety of businesses, you know, there'd be many different ways to make that showing. Counsel, did I capture that accurately?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Ashley.
Nancy is still muted for some reason. There we go. Okay. So does that move us on to our next topic, or are we still something to do with this one?
One last part to attend, and that's the schedule. So now I think that we, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, well, I think we've got the one question as far as, you know, how we're going to handle the different types of requests, so the committee can move forward on that, and we're going to move forward on it. Okay, so the way we sent it out, it was going to be Tuesday, April 28th, 9:00 a.m., the committee will meet, finalize the application, and determine how the criteria will be rated and scored, and then send out the applications on Tuesday afternoon. We still good with that?
Yeah, we're going to add to that, that we're going to discuss the, what was the exact, the post-grant reporting requirements. We are going to do that on that day as well.
Okay, okay. So that's the post-grant reporting. And then Wednesday, the 29th, because on the 28th, the committee will be talking about criteria and rating and scoring. On Wednesday, the 29th, at 5:30, council and the committee will meet to go over that information with the council. And then on Thursday, the 30th, the committee will need to consider the council feedback on the previous day, which is the criteria and scoring finalized. And then on Wednesday, May 6th, the applications will be due at close of business. And we'll put together as much information as we can. On Friday, May 8th, it'll be the time that the committee meets to start the review process. And that was the last date we set specifically, other than the team hopes to make a recommendation to council someday on the week of May 11th. Is that acceptable to council? Because we will start sending out and posting meeting notices.
That's acceptable to me, Bruce, meet. Would you please repeat what happens on the 30th?
On the 30th, right, well, what will happen on 29th is that the council and the committee will meet to review the criteria. On Thursday, the 30th, the committee will meet to consider the council feedback and finalize the way that things will be scored.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the schedule. Any other comments on that?
So are you saying the applications will be due the week of May 11th?
No, the Wednesday, May 6th, by close of business. Friday, May 8th, the committee will start the review process. They want to make a recommendation to council about their results the week of May 11th.
And so the checks should be sent out, or the grants should be made that same week after the recommendations are considered by the council?
Depends how early we can get the council, council approval. Again, remember that we don't know how many we're going to get, and it'll be Friday, the 8th, before the committee gets to start looking at them. So we may need, you know, a Monday or Tuesday meeting, and then we'll meet with you folks maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, depending on how quickly they're done.
Who's that?
Colleen just pointed out that during the week of May 11th, the 12th is already set for the council to have a workshop. So I think we can work towards that.
I think it depends on how many applications we get. But I mean, I think we can choose for that, and we'll do our best to meet that.
Okay.
I would like to do that.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, so then it looks like we're working towards the 12th for the committee report to council.
Okay. With that, I would like to move to the next item. Okay, which is consideration for the Resolution 216 for the purpose of extending the emergency declaration.
Bruce, do you want me to take that one?
Please.
Okay, so this is the extension of the emergency declaration and the prohibition on hotels renting to many of their customary patrons. So this one, we originally did, gosh, way back in March, seems like a long time ago. But because this is going on longer than anybody had anticipated, the new resolution is until, is until otherwise rescinded by city council. So the emergency declaration will be extended until you rescind it, and the prohibition or the restriction on hotels will, will go on until you rescind it as well.
Any comments or questions?
So this will not require us to review this every two weeks then?
No, that is for the evacuation of visitors. This one is different.
And Ashley, if I'm, if I have my information correct, the one regarding the visitors that is expiring on the 5th, and so we will have the council at least on the 29th for a meeting, so possibly we could add that to the agenda?
It's already on the. Yep, it's on the 5th, agenda for the 5th, and then the 29th, May 29th, is that what you're saying the next meeting is?
No, I'm saying that rather than wait till the very last minute on the 5th, there will be a meeting before, and I'm just suggesting that if we want to take action on the Wednesday, the 29th, that day is available.
Okay, it doesn't matter to me either way.
We're still scheduled for the 5th, however, so, and if we're doing it two weeks at a time, why don't we just leave it there?
I have no.
Yeah, it didn't matter.
We can talk about it on the 29th, and then if we don't, we could already do it on the 5th.
Here, okay. That works.
I think that my, my reason for suggesting the 29th is that if, if we're going to continue the action, then it would allow the hotel people to know, okay, well, I can't book until this date, rather than waiting until May 5th and then deciding whether or not they could put somebody in on the 6th. I'm just trying to give them a little bit more heads up.
I like that.
The hotel one is the one that we're voting on today, which will be in existence until rescinded.
Yeah, but opening the town really affects them too. The other thing is that by moving it to the 29th every two weeks then is jumped ahead a little bit. And with what the county is looking at around the 18th, that puts us a little more ahead on a decision process, so either way.
No, that's good. Make it the 29th, put it on the agenda.
Okay, we have a resolution though on the table right now, we're not on the table yet, but. Any questions specific? Then we're looking for our motion.
Well, I will move to approve. I've got the wrong one, sorry. I gotta bring it up.
Mike, it's 2016.
Okay, I move to approve resolution 2016.
Second.
Resolution 2016 for the purpose of extending the city's emergency declaration and protective measures. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
How does that fit with the timeline with the county, with the last situation report that we got saying they had extended it till May 31st?
My assumption is that this gives us the opportunity to do it whenever we need to. Correct, Ashley?
Correct, and that's how the Oregon, state of Oregon's execu, our executive order is laid out, that it is enacted until rescinded.
Right.
So the idea is. Go ahead, Sam.
It was Bruce. But that will give us the flexibility to stay in line with the county.
Okay, that's just my, my concern. I'm not, not trying to, to counter anything. I just wanted to stay in step with whatever the county and other local municipalities are doing.
Right. Okay, then we have a motion on the floor. Colleen, you want to call the roll?
Council President Bedfield.
Yes.
Counsel Rizley.
Yeah.
Counsel Ogilvy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yeah.
Mayor Stile.
Yes. Motion passes, so there we go. Next item is discussion of pending action. Bruce, do you want to lead us?
Yeah, yeah, Sam, if you don't mind, I've got a couple of things. It's already been mentioned that the county has extended their action through May 31st. They also talked, I think it was yesterday or the day before, they kind of reconfigured the governor's return or reopening plan to focus more on what is likely to happen in Clasip County, so I'm sure that's on their website. I forwarded that to council. It's important to note there are no dates on that yet, and there are certain criteria that are supposed to be met before, you know, you go into phase one, before you go into phase two. So the only thing that's happening is now it's just being discussed, and now there's a model of how it might work, but nobody is saying that all of these things, all these criteria have been met. So, and then we, we kind of wanted to focus just to our needs. The folks in finance have put together a very detailed report on the impact of make, of a utility grant or waiver, whatever, I'm having trouble finding words right now. But anyway, it, it covers the water, the wastewater and stormwater. And it models if you do a full, the average bill is 5712. If you, if you do that, this is what it's going to cost, and then it goes down to a much, to a smaller amount. So we'll, I'll try to get that information out to you today or over the weekend, so you'll have that information. And you, we have advertised the ordinance related to the deferrals. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Well, yes, I was wondering if, we had talked at our last meeting about the food bank, and you were going to be looking at what we might have to offer, but also maybe some suggestions about a sliding scale or something like that?
I don't recall the sliding scale, but I do remember the conversation about the food bank. And at this point, we are looking at what we would be able to do under like a community grant program next year. And then I think we.
We decided we wanted to move forward with something sooner than that.
Okay, yeah, Barg not, can you help with that?
This is Barg. As of today, we have $24,710 that has been donated since March 16th from our community. Very overwhelming, and I, I can't speak for the board of Food pantry. We do have a meeting on Monday, and we were going to, I was going to discuss it there with them. But this report has been, as I said, totally overwhelming.
That is fantastic to hear.
Yeah.
And, and I will continue talking to Barg, but I think that if you're doing pretty well now, that it's probably as important that we make sure that we deal with the food bank as part of the community grants, which they've never, you've not applied for before, but that's certainly a, a fine cause. And we want to make sure that we have funding available for that type of cause going into, and it will be July 1st would be the timeframe for that.
Well, that sounds great if they've got the money now and they're doing fine. I'm thrilled to hear that.
Yeah. Um, I will impart some of this information that I got when I had the mayor's meeting. The five of us met on phone Wednesday, and we were joined by Jennifer Purcell from the governor's office. And so we were pretty close and knew our concerns about how the coast is probably going to be more affected by other places opening too soon, independent of whatever our opening is. That came up, and I'm hoping that that will get to the, the thinking tank that's in the governor's office, whoever is making those comments, just so they're aware of that. Not just our four counties that have kind of decided or trying to work together in unison, as well as our five cities within Clasip County are committed. Now, all five mayors are committed to acting in unison in some manner. We'll see how the opening goes. We've decided that we're going to use the county's guidelines. So what the county decides as far as the county health department, as when opening shall start, will be our key for the five cities to begin their process. We will try and do this all together. I've also talked to the mayor of Manzanita. He has apprised me that Tillamook County has a very active county-wide opening committee team of some kind, and they are thinking along the same lines that Tillamook County will be opening in unison as far as the tourist aspect of Tillamook County. They might be opening some of the more rural aspects of Tillamook County, like dairy farms or something. Ahead of that. He didn't have more details than that. So those are the connections that I've been making as far as how us as leadership can start realizing that opening is going to be a steamroller once it gets started. And the starting process and the gate, when it opens, is going to be guided by this, by the governor's office. The governor's pretty elaborate plan for opening. So the county is going to follow that, but the county is the ones we're going to follow. So.
Sam, is there any coordination between Tillamook County and Clasip County in terms of opening?
Yeah, it's Lincoln County, Tillamook County, Clasip County and Columbia County, from what I understand, have been in communications between them. Don Baum mentioned that in his thing that Bruce sent us, and I've heard it from some other sources. I have not talked to Don directly.
That is wonderful to hear.
Yeah. Sam, was there any discussion about a soft start? A rolling start of opening different aspects at different times?
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion about how that might work. Astoria really wants to try a soft start. They're the only community in the county that I think can have a comfortable soft start because they have a lot of more normal businesses. They're not dependent 100% on tourism. Gearhart and Seaside were both quite concerned that as soon as the mention of something opening happens, we're going to get people. And soft is going to be very just determined more by the weather than how soft we want to make the soft start. It was proposed that we could try like opening only on weekends. I thought that was an intriguing idea. It didn't seem to fly with some of the others because they felt that once you open, you're committed. I don't know, that's, that depends on how much work you want to put into opening.
I was thinking of just opening on weekdays. The, you know, one of the things, the big draw, of course, is the beach. You can open all the shops and the hotels, but if the beach were closed, that would slow down certainly the day trippers. And we keep saying we can't do that, but somehow Seaside can. Was there any discussion about Seaside closing the beach and how effective it was? And whether that might be another approach to have a soft opening? And that is the shops first, the hotels. But people don't want to come here because the beach is closed, and that slows it down.
Yeah, we, we talked a little bit. Jay was impressed that the beach, they were able to keep the beach closed as much as they have. That was one interesting point. The other one was that he is, you know, the, the governor's office is leading with hotels and restaurants, where Jay was thinking to open with just shops first. So I don't know how this is going to go. Everybody's got different ideas of what's a soft opening. So if we were to consider following Seaside and saying, yeah, we could do something and then close the beach, I don't know, I'd have to think about that one.
Yeah, because I like to use the beach.
I went down there this morning, three people.
It's been nice.
So, I know, it's been very nice, but we're going to get, as soon as the weather really changes, we're going to feel it. I think what would be interesting would be to, as soon as the health department starts giving us some guidelines on how restaurants and businesses would be functioning, you know, what would be the protection equipment you need and, you know, all the, and that's supposed to be forthcoming. I, I've heard maybe next week. Heard that a lot, but, so if we get some guidelines, some, some businesses might want to do like a dry run just to see how it works. That's why I thought the weekend thing would work. The weekend thing would allow hotels to begin to book just on weekends.
Yeah.
And then having the weekdays closed back down, the residents would be able to escape a little bit and get out of their house because they're all hiding. Or not, I don't know. But we have time, I think, because I know the, the governor's thing, they're still waiting at least two weeks before they even really discuss the, what their gateway program is.
What kind of discussion was there about wearing masks in public?
Didn't have any on the mayor's conference.
Okay.
No. Okay.
Keep talking to them, yeah.
Yeah, that was the other thing. We're going to be trying doing this more often because we realized that once this gets going, it's going to be very important that we all know what each other is doing.
Yep.
And having five people on the line is real easy to have a nice conversation. The first time, the first time we met, we had Betsy Johnson on the line. That added an hour to the discussion, so.
Yep. Valuable, I'm sure, but. Long.
So that was just my little bit for the good of the order. I would like to just ask Bruce if Jason or any of his team had a chance to go downtown and double check on any businesses that might be opening?
Jason, want to come up to the podium, please?
No.
No? Did you cover your taser?
There weren't any businesses downtown that they came across. The only ones were actually in Midtown. The Pelican opened up for takeout food. Michael's Music was open and. Michael's Music was open, and Insomnia, I guess downtown was open too for takeout. But those are the only ones that they noticed that were open that haven't been. Nothing else.
Okay. Good.
Sam, can I ask another question of Jason?
Please.
We had a ca- a letter from the Amuses, and it had to do with visitors slash invited guests. Could you please explain, Jason, what you ended up coming up with about that?
Yes, the original call was to me from a homeowner who had described herself as a homeowner, not as a vacation rental, and said that she had some friends that were coming through town, and that they had an RV and wanted to stop along the way and just park the RV in their yard and stay in it for the night. And I said they couldn't stay in the RV, but if they were a second homeowner, they could allow an invited guest into their house. And after further investigation, we found out that it was a rental. And according to our current regulations, they're not allowed to have an invited guest at the rental. So they had, in the in-between time, they had decided that they weren't going to stay there anyway. So it was a moot point, but we are being more cognizant of people's wording when we're investigating those.
So if you're an invited guest, the owner has to be there?
Correct, at a vacation rental.
Okay.
At a vacation rental is the key term there. And that has to do with the permit. Or, or if you want to be, my understanding is that if you want to rent your house out, you have to have a permit. The Cannon Beach permit doesn't require, or doesn't allow you to allow people to stay there when you're not there.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a, also a public comment from the last meeting. The person would wanted the letter read into the record. We've been over this. Reading into the record is just a waste of time. It is in the record because you sent it to us. It's actually in the record better than if we read it. I would ask the council if they have all seen this letter.
I have.
I have.
Yeah.
And if you want to make any comment about the letter or to the letter, you can now. Or we can just rule with the fact that we have all read it.
I have read it. I am sympathetic to their points. But I would ask that they have the understanding that we are in charge of when this town needs to open in concert with not just ourselves. And that's what I have to say.
And also, I did, I got, I received a call, and then I went to the business and met with the individual, and I talked about a lot of those issues. And thought that we were on the right track with it. But one of the concerns is whether or not people can move from someplace in Clatsop County to, you know, do some business in Cannon Beach. And the clarification that Ashley provided specifically allows that. And beyond that, as far as like trying to get more people in here for the businesses, we're kind of, all the rules, the governors, everything that we're doing is saying, no, we're not ready for that. So that's the conversation.
Yeah, I just want to parrot that because we, we can do things as a city council. We could make some rules, but we're trying to follow what the other cities in the county are doing, what the county is doing, and what the state is doing. So we're trying to be as aware of what everybody else is doing so that we can be on the ball. But right now, nobody else is doing anything, so... So everybody knows that it might look like Cannon Beach is not doing anything. Let me tell you, we are. Especially Bruce and Rick and our team that are on the phone all the time.
Thanks, Sam, and we're keeping you guys, we're keeping you guys pretty busy, too.
If I can actually make a comment about that. I mean, our firm represents, you know, I think almost 30 municipalities in the state of Oregon. I would say that City Cannon Beach is one of the most active in trying to address some of these issues and being extremely innovative in trying to respond to all the public's needs. So I would applaud the city council and staff about just how diligently and thoughtfully you guys have approached this issue.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Extremely innovative, does that have anything to do with the discomfort of the attorney?
You know?
Directly proportional.
Lot of thought exercises.
I'd like to say how much we appreciate the staff, too, for, both Bruce and the staff, for helping us out and staying on top of everything. You've got a ton of issues that you're dealing with constantly, and we really appreciate your help and assistance and suggestions.
And let's not forget how patient and understanding our citizens have been in getting through all this and adhering to the very harsh, I think sometimes restrictions, conditions, but safety and health is important above all others. And again, I just think, I've been really impressed with the citizens and how well they have adhered to the this crisis, this pandemic. And we're starting to see light at the end of the tunnel. We're starting to plan for that.
Good comment, then. At that, anybody else have anything for Good of the Order?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes, we have, yes, Ms. Colleen has something for us.
I'm just interested in when you're interested in voting on those two ordinances. They were posted yesterday. You can vote on the 30th, if you have a meeting on the 30th. But you're meeting on the 29th? So I guess you can meet on the 29th and the 30th. But those two ordinances are, one's creating the committee that you were working with today, or the program that you're working with today. And the other one is the transient lodging tax deferral ordinance.
And I would, I would ask that we, if we can, if the 30th is earliest we can do it, I would ask that you meet on the 30th. That's the due date. In the meantime, we plan on sending out a letter saying, well, actually, just administratively saying that the funds, one way or the other, will be due May 15th. Because if we have a meeting the night of April 30th, we can't say it's due immediately kind of a thing. So we're kind of just giving a little bit of room for council action and giving folks a heads up it's coming.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sure.
On the COVID-19 Business Assistance Program, it lists the reserves as 300,000, but in the application, it talks about 302. So should it reflect the same number in both?
Yes, it should be 302. That was a good catch.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, I'm sorry to interject at the last minute, but I did respond to all of you about the upcoming budget meeting cycles, and I was just wondering if you all had an opinion about that.
I'm pretty free right now, so I don't care if we have to go one way or the other. I'm loose.
Is there a... It's a lot to digest, so I was kind of hoping like Brandon that maybe it could be a weekly situation.
Is there a reason we have to meet four hours a day for three days in a row?
What is the, I'm asking...
13, May 13, 14, and 15, I believe, are the dates.
Right, but why do we have to have it done by the 13th or 15th? Something's coming right after that, doesn't it? Notification is accounting or something?
Yeah, I mean, we could possibly, if they have another idea, we could maintain that.
So we can extend.
We do have a hard deadline that I have to get the hearing notice to the municipal.
And do the numbers have to be in that?
Yes, you don't have to.
And that date is what? Okay, yes, there is, there is a hard deadline we have to work up to. There probably is flexibility to doing it three days in a row. We'll send out another set of alternative suggestions.
You know, even a, every other day would help. It gives you a chance to digest the last four-hour meeting, go through your notes, kind of get ready for the next meeting. That would still accelerate it quite a bit, even if we did it every other day. But every day, I think that's hard. We're, we'll all be just rummy. Who knows what we will prove?
How far are we behind?
We are. I don't know if we're that far behind. We were talking about...
We're behind.
We're behind. Okay, I thought we were meeting like the 5th or something like that with the original schedule. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're terribly far behind. We are close. I think we were talking about getting the budget out on the 6th.
Yeah, she said 6, 13, and 20.
6, 13, and 20 is the, is the original date. Yeah, first week was scheduled for May 6 originally.
Because we might feel a little behind, because we tried to get you the budget a week in advance, but we're, it's probably going to be about a week and different.
Does that mean we're going to get lunch served to us at our homes? You should have dinner.
Yeah, actually...
You might need it.
Yeah. Actually, the preference is if we can, in understanding the whole distancing and all, but we've got a big room here, and we clean it after every meeting and before every meeting. And so if it's, as much as possible, if folks can be here, I think that would make for a better process, but we'll work any, anyway.
I think we ought to do it there.
Yeah, I do, too.
I do, too.
Okay. We're planning for that now. And there's, just make sure we ask all the folks on the committee because there's some older folks there that might be concerned.
Okay, and one thing I don't think we got finalized is, are you willing to meet on April 30th to deal with the two ordinances?
Yeah.
I am.
I am.
Yeah.
Okay, 5:30?
That's fine.
Okay, great. All right, would 5 o'clock be better?
Just not 1:00, 1:00 o'clock again. This ruins the whole day.
Not 1:00 o'clock, okay.
I think this was to accommodate my schedule in part, so thank you.
Oh, it's all your fault, Ashley. Okay, no problem.
But what time are we meeting on the 30th?
5:30?
5:30.
Yeah.
Okay, so last item passed, last call for Good of the Order. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rusty, for getting this all together.
Thank you, Rusty. Rusty, what a part of you, true.
Yeah, thanks, Sam.